We have the time at 7:01 PM, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you'll stand with me and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Heathon, would you like to go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Raymert. Did I hear Mr. Raymert?
Oh, here, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were starting yet. Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Reed.
George Orwell.
Yes, here.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of this evening's meeting is our normal monthly trustee meeting. At this time, when we go ahead and open it up for any visitor comments, we'll ask if you please to hold your comments to five minutes if you have comments. Haley, will you take them off mute? The caller's off mute. Okay, it doesn't appear anybody has raised their hand or taken themselves off mute. Give it another couple of seconds. With the intending weather setting in tonight, we were going to switch it up a little bit. Mr. Heathon, if you don't mind, we're going to let Jeremy go ahead and do his report. So if he needs to tend to the roads at any point, he can feel free to do that. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely fine, thank you.
Jeremy, are you okay with that? I know we didn't give you heads up on that one.
That's fine, thank you. I appreciate the consideration.
You have the floor.
I'll make this quick. First item on my agenda is, at the last meeting, I talked to the board about trying to get some bids for the cemetery maintenance. I contacted SR Davis Commercial Grounds Maintenance. I think they're out of Middletown and Swordfish Lawn Service. And I did get a response from Swordfish Lawn Service, but they did not give me a price. Gentlemen, apparently possibly the owner said that they were covered up with snow removal and some other things. And they had a death that they had to attend a funeral, so he was unable to get me a quote. And I did not hear back from SR Davis. So kind of came up empty-handed on that. I apologize. The second item is, we had to do an inventory review for Mr. Heathon. And going through my inventory, I did notice a couple items that had been disposed of that I need to have the board remove or declare excess so that they can be taken off the road department's inventory. The first item was a plastic 425 gallon poly tank. This was a tank that we used to store beet juice brine mixture for the wintertime treating of the roads. And about a year ago, that tank developed a split in the side just from age. And we were afraid it was going to get worse and start leaking liquid out the back. So we came up with another tank and basically cut that tank up and disposed of it in the garbage because it was split and it would no longer hold liquid, so it didn't have any value. The other item was a HP laser printer that was purchased before I was road superintendent. So probably close to 30 years ago, if not 25 by any means. We pulled that out of storage and tried to use it. It didn't, no longer functioned. Same thing, we disposed of it in the garbage because it had no value. So with the board's permission, I'd like to declare those two items excess so that they can be removed off the road department's inventory.
We will do that excess by resolution. It will be 2021-11.
I will introduce resolution 2021-11 to declare the two items that Mr. Holberg just mentioned, the printer and the 450 gallon, I believe it was, tank excess.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion of resolution 2021-11 before we vote? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-11 is adopted.
Thank you. The third item is with the putting of the new truck into service. We listed the 2004 International Dump Truck on GovDeals and offered it for public auction. That auction ended on Monday afternoon and the winning bid was $25,502 to a gentleman in Missouri. He has not taken possession of that unit yet, but it is paid for through GovDeals. So I expect GovDeals will be sending us a check, hopefully within the next week. And he will be making plans to stop by and pick that up here in the next few days, I believe. Couple other items. Obviously, we've been busy plowing and salting the roads as they require and also cleaning up the trucks after doing so to try to keep them in the best condition we can. And the other item I had, which I apologize, I did not put it in my minutes or in my report, but I did email it to you here in the last probably 15 minutes. In my budget for 2021, under gas tax. Look here. Yeah, under gas tax improvement of sites, I listed crack seal at $5,500. And that's something we do every year. We contract with a company called DJL Material and Supply out of Akron to provide the crack seal and the machinery to apply that crack seal. I did get a bid from them or a quote. And the only reason I bring this up is because it is over the amount I had budgeted by $271, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention. My budget at $5,500 and the amount came in at $57.71 and 25 cents. So I don't know if we need to do anything with that, but I did want to bring it to your attention. It was approved in the budget, but like I said, at only $5,500. So I'm short $200 and some odd dollars, $271 and 25 cents, to be exact.
I am comfortable not requiring a resolution for this. You have money elsewhere in your budget for that $271. So I don't think you trustees need to take action, but you may if you wish.
I don't see any reason to take action at this time.
I do appreciate you letting us know, just to keep us in the loop. Appreciate that.
No problem. The only other thing I had was, just to keep you up to speed, I'll probably be bringing the backhoe replacement up at the next trustees meeting. I will try to get you as much information on that prior to the meeting so you have a chance to review it. And, but that's just more of an FYI, so you'll be getting more information as far as bids and costs. But I think the $25,000 that the truck brought on GovDeals will help offset that cost. So I will keep you up to date and send you any information I get on that. And that's all I have.
Mr. Holberg, I just have one question. Under the two places that you named for the cemetery maintenance, there were out of town places. Is there any in-town places? I know NEF, I don't know if they're bonded or insured, but I know locally that's a...
NEF's no longer does lawn care. They strictly do only sales and service. I did not reach out to anybody in Germantown because I'm not really aware of any of the places in Germantown to do it. But I also need to reach out to Nathaniel Peterson and find out what the requirements are as far as bonding, insurance amounts. That's what's going to kind of keep just the average mower, you know, single-person mower, out of the bidding process, I would imagine.
Yeah, I understand. I was unaware that NEF stopped doing that, so.
Yes.
Yeah, on the same note, I had dropped the ball and did not email Nathaniel on what our leeway is. If we could come to an agreed-upon price between road and bridge for reimbursement on the service or if we had to pay you guys based on the exact hours reimbursement. So I did reach out to him Sunday. I think you were copied on that note.
Yes.
We'll see what he says on that. So you can kind of follow up on that email with him to see about the quote piece. I mean, ultimately, what I'd like to do is be able to keep the money transferring over to you guys. Or not transferring as if it is, but start transferring over to you guys. I think it's just going to be tough for us. It was in that $10,000 range, like what we had talked on your estimate. So we'll see what he says on it. We'll get on these quotes and we'll talk about this again next month, is I guess the suggestion.
That sounds good.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Mr. Heathon, you want to go ahead with your front end tour report?
Yes, good evening again, everyone. I don't have a whole lot of items tonight, so this will go quicker than sometimes. But first of all, I have given you five sets of minutes. You have the minutes from the December 30 special meeting, which was our budget review meeting. The January 4 organizational meeting. The January 7 special meeting, which was the zoning hearing. The January 11 regular meeting. The January 13 special meeting, which was on the JED. I am still working on the minutes from the January 26 special meeting on the JED. And I will have them completed in plenty of time for you to review those in March. But for tonight, if there are no changes, could I ask for a motion to approve the five sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That's a lot of meetings and a lot of minutes. We had a very busy month. I'm glad that's behind us. I have given you the January financial reports. You have the fund status report at the end of January. You have the cash summary by fund year-to-date, which is one month. So that's the month of January. You have the receipt listings for the month of January. And you have the payment listings for the month of January. There's nothing significant that I feel I need to make note of for you, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If there are no questions, I would ask you to make a motion to approve the January financial reports and authorize the payments of the January bills, which are warrants 50374 through 50392 and the vouchers number one through number 78. And those represent payroll, direct deposit, payroll tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. During January, I sent the Montgomery County Auditor's Office our 2021 certificate of the total amount from all sources available, which they will use to prepare our 2021 official certificate. I also responded to a request from the Legal Women Voters of the Greater Dayton area for updated public official information for their 2021 Directory of Public Officials. And of course, that now includes you, Mr. Raymert, which they did not have before. In mid-January, I received notice from the Montgomery County Auditor's Office that we would be receiving an $11,220 and 20 cent real estate assessment fee refund. This information was also published, I believe, in the Dayton Daily News around that same time. And what this relates to is that following the auditor's completion of the sexennial reappraisal project, they were able to refund fees back to each county taxing authority that contributed to those costs. The funds were received by the township on February 3, and I have recorded that those amounts in each levy fund proportionately, as was directed to me by the auditor. During January, I received notice from the Ohio Auditor of State that discussed the number of UAN users who do not currently complete bank reconciliations on a timely basis. And as a result, the auditor is launching a new feature to generate direct communication by email to an entity's Board of Trustees if the fiscal officer has not posted a bank reconciliation in UAN within the past 60 days. UAN clients have an option to activate this feature, which is being strongly recommended by the Auditor of State. If you would like to opt into this feature, the auditor asks that you pass a resolution authorizing this feature to be activated by me within the e-services account on their website. And I'm happy to explain further if you have any questions. If you decide you want to opt into this communication from the auditor, we will do that by resolution. And that will be 2021-12, I believe it is.
I don't think there's any harm in doing it, so I'll introduce resolution 2021-12.
And that resolution, Mr. Stubbs, would be to opt in to the notification feature from the Auditor of State concerning bank reconciliations?
Yes.
Is there a second to the resolution 2021-12?
I will second.
Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-12 is adopted. I've heard from my son, William, who's a member of the Parks Board, that the Parks Board did not meet in January and will not be meeting in February. And perhaps we'll hear more about that later in the meeting from your report, Mrs. Reed. But I think that's who's on the Parks Board liaison. But I'm really concerned. We need to encourage the board to meet and discuss the parks levy that needs to be put on the November ballot. And we need their recommendation on the type of levy to run, whether the levy will be a renewal or replacement, and the millage that they recommend. The deadline to file with the Board of Elections is in early August. And although I've not been through this process before, I understand that it does take a couple of months of communication back and forth with the Board of Elections in order to place a levy on the ballot. So we really need to keep this ball moving forward on this issue. We only have one shot at passing this levy because if it doesn't pass in November, there is no Parks Levy money that will come in during 2022. Moving on, I attended the online 2021 Ohio Township. Sorry, did I miss something? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just appalled there just for a second, just to address that so we could move on and not re-circle back that. But they did reach out. I am the representative for the Parks Board for Germantown Township. But when they reached out, I contested that we did meet. They didn't feel like since Judy had responded and said since we decided not to put it on to the ballot, it might not be pressing and it might be good to see a little bit more of how COVID pans out a little bit further before we make decisions. I suggested that we, you know, we could wait past the February 1 and even potentially the March. But that would be the latest. I'd be interested in waiting before we got together to decide, you know, whether there was an increase on the levy that would be proposed and how we would do it. So we did talk about it. They did want to wait a little bit longer from Germantown's perspective to see how COVID panned out before we met. And so I thought one more month would be no harm in that. So I'll push for it next month. But again, if you feel like it's more immediate or that we have a more pressing deadline, I can push that next time.
I think one more month is not going to hurt. I just would not want to see this month after month drag on. So I think that'll work perfectly.
Okay.
Thank you very much for updating me. An apology for having the wrong representative. I'd forgotten. Okay, moving on. I attended the online 2021 Ohio Township Association Conference this past week. It was a five-day online this year. Obviously, we weren't meeting in person as we do most years in Columbus. And although I didn't find this year's conference to be as in-depth or beneficial as last year's in-person conference, most of it was interesting and informative. And I know I sent you all some suggestions on which sessions you may want to watch the videos if you weren't able to attend live for those. I also want to remind you as well as everyone listening that we have a special meeting coming up Thursday night at 6 o'clock to discuss the potential JED. During January, the township began the annual fixed asset physical inventory. And of course, you've already heard from Mr. Holberg. That's when he identified the two items that you've declared as excess tonight. Those assets have now been verified by the road department. For my department and also for your trustee department, I handled that for you. The police department, the trash department, and the zoning department are still working on their verification. And we may have additional items to declare as excess, depending on how those turn out. And this is mainly a reminder for township residents that I email trustee meeting notices in advance of all meetings of the trustees that those notices include the WebEx access instructions. I have a list of people who have requested those notices from me. And should anyone want to be added to the list, they can email me or call my office. Trustee meeting notices are also emailed to those township residents who are on a list maintained by the police department. And also trustee meeting notices are uploaded to the township's website and are also posted on the two Facebook pages that are maintained by the police department and the zoning department. And finally, hard copies of trustee meeting notices are posted on the Township Hall meeting room door. I think we do a good job in communicating all of that to our residents. The only other thing that we could potentially consider would be publishing every meeting notice in the Germantown Press or the Dayton Daily News. And I don't recommend that we spend the money to do that. And with that in mind, I am done. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. I guess I would just note from my perspective, I think that that's sufficient. And I agree that I wouldn't post anything on the press, I guess. Is there any concern? Has there been feedback that we should push things onto the press?
No, it was just one option that was identified to me by a resident of the township. And so I share that option with you, but I think that's money, that's not the best way to spend our taxpayer money.
Okay, with that, unless anybody else has questions for him. Okay, Chief Anzig, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keith issued K-9 Edus, his Montgomery County Dog License, on Tuesday, February 2. According to the auditor, we were the only police department that actually met with him in person. And he had a nice little photo op in our trustee room. We ordered the equipment requested by CERT as of Friday 2/5/2021. We have only received the batteries, the vests, and the large duffel they requested. But we are still waiting the arrival of the jackets and rain pants. I'd like to take a moment to thank the road department for all they do in vehicle maintenance and building maintenance. Jeremy and Scott are key at helping making Germantown Ship a great place, both to live and work. In January, I was sworn in as Vice President of Montgomery County Association of Police Chiefs, whose membership includes local, state, and federal law enforcement within Montgomery County. The executive board is a progressive elected position amongst the members. And I served as Treasurer and Secretary respectively over the past two years. I brought to your attention last month, the current police server is now out of date and will no longer be receiving security updates. And as of the last week or two, it's started to affect our productivity a little bit. The ballpark figure that I was told for a replacement server was somewhere in the area of 15,000 to 18,000. However, I'm happy to say that the quote received from CDO Technologies was $10,576.92, but that does not include any labor. CDO Technologies will build the server and set it up, causing relatively little downtime. You will find a copy of the quote attached to the email I sent with my report. The old server will still remain utilized as a backup server should the new one go down for any reason and as additional storage. As our tape backup now requires two tapes. For those that didn't know, we back up everything Monday through Friday on a tape drive. One of those tape drives actually goes to an off-site location in case something was to happen here at the township building. We've always got at least one week. We only have to go back one week before we have everything backed up. But now it's getting, the information we're storing is getting so big that it takes two tapes. So we're going to use the second, or the old server as a backup for those tapes. And then only one day away, or I'm sorry, one day a week, the two-tape system will be used for the off-site location. Since it was brought to my attention after the budgets were submitted, I do not have it covered under any light item. As such, I would request that the trustees pass a resolution allowing for the purchase of the server with the monies from the other expenses line item.
And that resolution would be 2021-13.
I will introduce resolution 2021-13, a resolution to purchase new updated servers for the police department from the other expenses line item.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion of resolution 2021-13? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymert?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-13 is adopted.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. You look very debonair tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Haley, I'm ready to see you.
Yes, so if you all reviewed my report, it is very short and sweet tonight. The only thing that I have to report is two permits. I've written over the last 30 days, a full barn on Brown's Run and an agriculturally exempt structure on Diamond Mill. And that concludes my report.
I won't let Haley off the hook so easily. She's been doing several other things. So we'll go ahead and get into a couple other things real quick on Haley's test. One of them is related to the township email that we've talked about the last couple of meetings. Haley has been trying to work with Gmail to understand exactly how we could set those up to be the lowest cost impact for the township. So I think we are at a point where we have at least a pretty solid assumption of what the cost should be and what the impact would be. So I'll let Haley talk through that. And then, you know, if we start to move forward and she finds out as she's trying to sign us up that it's anything different, she can bring it back. But... But at this point, I feel like she's tried diligently to be on hold on calls for over an hour and try to reach out to Gmail to get answers. And I think it'd be best if we just start proceeding, and I think they'll work with her a little bit better than. So as she's pulling it up, just remember, we have, I think, nine email accounts. Is that correct, Haley?
Um, yes, nine total. And that includes three trustee emails, one SIS cost or email, one road email, two police emails, one trash, and one zoning email.
Okay. And can you tell us what the cost is of all of those accounts individually except for yours, which would be the administrator account?
Yes, so the base accounts, which would be eight accounts, are $6 a month. And they have just about all of the benefits as the administrator account would be. The administrator account would be $12 a month.
In the administrator account, the key benefit there is that you can record our meetings that would be, is it WebEx or is it?
So the meetings would then be recorded on Google Meet, which would replace WebEx, which currently we are spending 162 plus tax per year for WebEx.
So 48 a month plus the 12 for years, so $60 a month. And that's probably before tax, but maybe it's not. Well, there's no tax on that yet. So $60 a month times your 12 months, so $720 a year, less the 162 for the WebEx we're paying today. So we're talking somewhere in that 550-ish range net.
Correct.
We had originally talked about approving $400 to do the .gov. And then obviously, there were some issues with the way that thing turned out. So the question is, are we comfortable with $550 annually? This doesn't seem like there's any escalators or anything like that. It's just their flat fee, $6 per month. I don't think that this would be increasing. The question is, do we want to do it? And is that the right amount of emails that, correct, Haley?
Correct.
Just one question, because we have elections in November. There could be three new trustees.
Yep.
So you would have to add, because we would have to keep our accounts for public records for a couple of years. So do we just add, so say all three of us get replaced, do we just add three additional?
Yep, so there would be no additional cost to that with each.
Up here. It's a good question, as you said.
So for each person, for each email, you get up to, you get several.
It's like five or six aliases or something. So you can have like, so each of us technically have one trustee spot.
So it would be like trustee one, trustee two, trustee three.
That's fine. I was just saying.
You could still use your name, your name right. But then what would happen is add account. That's why we would need to set up new ones. Because you can also, I think, bring in, like, I could bring in my Gmail account that I'm using today.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't do that because it's got some personal information in there. And so you would want to set up a brand-new one because it would only be for trustee because it would have to go to the next trustee and have to pay increments.
Yeah, so any email, if they wanted to, like, for instance, my email, I can transfer all of my things from my current email to the new email. And then if anybody were to ever email me to my current email address, it would just forward it.
Okay. I just didn't know if there was going to be a cost associated with that.
And we can use our current domain, which we already pay for. So there would be no additional cost with that. So it would be, it would be like, for example, if we went with jayscotsub@german-t township.org.
Okay. That's fine. I was just curious. I didn't know how that would work.
And then additional to just the email, I mean, we get the Google Meet, which replaces the WebEx. We get calendars. Like, I'm sure anybody that's a teacher knows all the things that you get with a Google account. Let's see. We record it on the Google Drive, same as WebEx. We have drives that we can share with just certain people. Drives that we can share, like, for all three of you. You can have OneDrive that's specific to you if you need to share any information. I think I already said calendars. We get docs, sheets, and slides. Surveys, if we ever wanted to put a survey out. Files. We also get security, reset verification, policy controls, protection program. So we don't have to get any extra security on our emails or anything like that. So there's a lot.
I don't think I have any other questions. Do you guys have any other questions?
No.
Okay. I'm going to introduce, I guess, on this one, you have a resolution. Mr. Heaton?
Well, I think this is, since it's replacing costs we currently have, even though it's a little more, I think we can do this by a motion. If I'm wrong, I'll deal with the impact.
Okay, I'll introduce a motion or propose a motion to get Gmail, G Suite, which will be at our township domain for the emails to consistently have emails across all the employees here at the township.
I will second that.
Any discussion of the motion?
I just, well, not of the motion. I just appreciate all of Haley's hard work in making this happen because I know it could not have been easy, so.
Yeah, on that same note, I mean, and we'll talk about this maybe a little bit more. Mr. Heaton had mentioned going to the conference this year. There was a lot of stuff on the conference, and Mr. Heaton pointed out a couple of the conference meetings. And they were about having your website work harder for you. And it's like, I think we're set up in a place where we can do a lot of those things that they were discussing on there because of what Haley's done with this new website. I think getting consistent emails is a step forward. And we don't have to rush into any of these types of things. And I don't want to make this Haley's full-time job. But I appreciate the work she's done, and I do think that we are in a place where we can continue to move forward into the 21st century on some of this type of stuff to communicate with our township people. So appreciate the work on that.
Absolutely.
If there is no further discussion on the motion, I'll just call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, and the last one related to Haley's desk is, you know, Haley and I had talked a little bit about the notices that Haley will pass out to people in the community from time to time based on violations or potential violations, I should say. And we were just talking about what the process was and if it was documented. And what I suggested to Haley is, you know, the worst thing I could see happening, and we, as most people are aware, there was a situation where we'd sent some notices and sometimes people don't receive them as happily as others do. And so we want to talk about, you know, what's the exact procedure? Make sure we have documented that we're all comfortable, that we're following it. So what Haley did is she typed up her process that she follows for sending notices out to the community. She's given each one of us a copy of that on the desk. Haley, I've read through it and give Jake and Abra a chance to read through it here for a second. I think it makes sense. I know that you, it's in accordance with the ORC, so I don't think we have any issues there. The only thing I would note is up there on one where you say complaint received, I would say complaint received or identified. And Haley and I had a discussion about this because obviously Haley can receive calls, texts, or verbal complaints from the community, but she can also identify things visually herself. She obviously is not going out spending her time looking for these types of things. But if things come to our attention, especially in the early stages of construction where someone might not have gotten a permit or be in accordance with the zoning resolution, Haley can send that herself. This is where we did spend a little bit of discussion because, you know, this is where I want input from anybody here in the trustees. You know, my opinion is we shouldn't necessarily be going out looking for things that have existed for 10, 12 years and community members aren't complaining about and raising those issues because we don't want to necessarily pick fights with the township folks. But if someone's early on in building something and they haven't gotten a permit or they're not compliant with the resolution, I think it makes tons of sense for Haley to send them a first notice, just say, hey, we noticed this. That's where I wanted your guys' input because ultimately, if there's ever an issue that she sends out a notice and that person doesn't want to comply, ultimately, they're going to come to us. So I want to make sure we're on the same page with how she's following the procedures here so we're all in lockstep when it gets to that point. So I'm just giving you guys an opportunity for input if you have any thoughts on this. The biggest thing is just how we proceed. And I think she makes a good point in here that, you know, in her time in the zoning office, she's never had a case that's had to come before the trustee. So this is pretty much a rare occurrence, but it's always better to have our ducks in a row on this.
I prefer complaints from a. And like, if you're driving to work or whatever and you see something, but we don't have the budget to have the zoning going out and driving around inspecting. So I don't mind, like, if you see, I know we had a place not too long ago, and we were in the right of way, it was before your time. But we were able to let them know, you can't, I mean, it was a county road. So it wasn't even going to be us. It was going to be the county. So yeah, I mean, I don't mind if you see something on your way to work or driving around or whatever. But we can't make, I don't think we can make a habit out of driving around. Searching for stuff, and we don't have the budget to sustain that, so. I have no problem with it. Yeah, just, I definitely prefer neighbor complaints because if neighbors are getting along, there's no sense in stirring stuff up.
Yeah, and there was a couple of things that came up early on in my time here. And I had, you know, neighbors don't want to, they don't want to argue with each other. They don't want to pick fights with each other. So sometimes they reach out to me like, hey, I saw this. And so I reached out to Nathaniel and asked him, you know, and that's what he told me, like, if I saw it, I could do something about it. They can even send you an anonymous. You know, they can call you from a blocked number and not leave a name or number to call back and just say, hey.
And I think that makes sense. I think this is where I was looking for input and for us to be a little bit more transparent is, I think, again, if she's identifying something early on, not going out looking for it, but it can stir her attention in some way, shape, or form, we send a notice. But if you send a notice, and obviously, I'm not wanting this to be, okay, don't comply, township. But if someone doesn't comply, I don't think we need to press this issue over and over unless it's one of two things. We see there's a really significant issue that could come from whatever they're doing. Or someone then, like a neighbor, then brings it up as well, and then we can start pressing the issue. Because I just don't think we want to get in the business of consistently, you know, reaching out to the township if, like you said, the neighbors aren't having a complaint with it. If it's not an issue, not being a cause for concern in the neighborhood, we probably don't want to reach out to people too often. It's fine to send them the first notice and try to get them to comply with what's in the resolution, make sure that they pay attention. Because a lot of people don't even know the resolution exists and the permits need to happen. So I think that makes sense for Haley sometimes to be reaching out and doing that. I just wouldn't be pushing it too hard unless there was a concern from the neighbors.
Right.
That's just my general thought. So just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. I appreciate Haley writing this up. Documentation always helps us, and we'll know what to do in the next day. Appreciate that, Haley.
Absolutely.
So moving on to my report now. Mr. Heaton's already mentioned the JED progress, that we do have another JED meeting coming up this week. So I just wanted to note it here in our meeting that we have been continuing to meet on the JED met twice since our last regular scheduled meeting. And that continues to progress. As far as the OTA conference, agree with Mr. Heaton. I found several things interesting in there. Obviously, I had mentioned the website. I think there's a lot of opportunity for us on our website. I do think we do a lot of things well, and there's only so much we'll be able to do with our staffing as far as having our township website work for us just because it could become a full-time job pretty quickly, and so we don't want that to happen. But we'll continue to try to make progress there. I think there's opportunities for us, and Haley and I will continue to brainstorm. And if you guys have anything, obviously, bring that up to us so we can continue to improve the website. Another thing on the OTA conference, you know, when I had sat down with Jeremy and tried to go through the past five-year budget type thing and look at that information, we were trying to get rules of thumb of how much it costs to maintain township roadways or 37 miles that we have here in the township. And one thing I did notice in the OTA conference, they had several really good slides within the deck showing how much it costs to maintain roadways for different periods of times and when to potentially invest to keep those roadways strong and good. And so I thought that that was an interesting resource. And maybe that's something we can put stuff like that on the website at some point, just as some reference points to the OTA websites because they have a lot of good information out there. And I think the community deserves to understand a little bit more about how much it costs for us to maintain our roadway. So I thought, oh, that's also some good stuff on there and some ideas. And again, it's back to the website and what information we can share with the township folks. So was happy with that. The next topic is Pro On Call SIP trunks. We talked this in the January meeting. Jeremy might not be on any longer. Jeremy had talked with the Pro On Call folks about SIP trunks. I had followed up and had a couple of discussions with them and then spoke with Shawna as well. Shawna would be the one interfacing with the phone systems most often. And Shawna's comfortable with it. I'll kind of walk you guys through what I know on the SIP trunks. If you have any questions, hopefully, I can answer them. But I think it is an opportunity, again, for the township to save money. You know, I noted what Jeremy had told us last time, and I was having, it was difficult for me to understand exactly where Jeremy was coming from and how we would get call savings. What I ended up finding out is everything Jeremy said was exactly right. But Pro On Call did a better job of getting through to my denseness, I guess. So hopefully, I can help you guys understand. So we currently have a quote for $6,000 from Pro On Call. $4,000 of that dollars is for a server that we already had budgeted for this year that the police department needed. And so the $2,000 incremental dollars is related to the SIP trunks. And that's for the setup, the hardware, and the licenses for these SIP trunks. What the SIP trunks will do is essentially they replace our six lines that we have with Spectrum. And they'll actually deliver those telephone lines over the internet now through the hardware that we'd be purchasing through Pro On Call. Our current phone lines, those six lines of Spectrum, is $280 a month. And it would only be $80 a month to go to Pro On Call on a continuous basis. So we would save $200 a month, which is what Jeremy had told us. It's about a $2,000 to $2,500 upfront investment. Like I said, it's all part of a $6,000 quote, so Pro On Call didn't have it broke out very specifically between all the labor and everything. But let's just call it $2,500 upfront for the SIP trunks, for the licenses, hardware, and getting it set up labor. So it would take roughly 10 to 12 months to pay back that upfront investment with these savings we would have from switching over to these SIP trunks. So Pro On Call was very helpful. They said they would answer any other calls or emails that we may have on the topic. Shawna had emailed me about a week ago and said she was comfortable with it. Pro On Call promised us that no service would change. They promised us reliability, claims, and several other things. I'm comfortable with it at this point. I know there's some continuity we always have here and appreciate the continuity, but I think this is something we could get call savings if we want to do it. So I'll leave it to you guys if you have questions on that.
I mean, I'm comfortable with it. I think continuity is good. But I also think we need to move forward into, as you said earlier, the 21st century. So the upfront cost is kind of hard, but it will pay for itself over time. That $80 a month, is that for, is there a contract that says that's for a year, or is that?
No, again, this is another one where they said they didn't anticipate any increases. I don't have a contract. There's not a contract on that one at all, as far as I'm aware. It's a month-to-month deal. So we can ask them. Sometimes we can ask them maybe if they want to go down to 75 or something like that, if we did lock in a longer period of time. But as far as I'm aware, they're not looking to increase it over a period of time.
That would be my concern, really.
And it doesn't affect the police departments because they have to be hard-wired, I believe, for their phones. So this is not including the police department?
It's not the, no, it's the police department's line. It's all the lines here. It's not our dispatch type line that we have. That's separate from, I can't remember, Consolidated Communications or something, maybe. They handle that differently. It's our township line here.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay. So what I plan to do is, I mean, Shawna had to move forward with the quote for the server that they need anyways. So I'll tell her that. that they need anyways, so I'll tell her that, I mean, and we can pass a motion, Mr. Heaton, if you need to or anything, but we can get it to where Shawna has the ability then to move forward, and she can work with Pro Long Call if they find out at any given point that they can't maintain service, which Pro Long Call, they manage everything else we do, they have all the handsets. So I was very explicit with them that you guys should know exactly what our service is today. If we did move these lines from Spectrum to you guys, you would have 100% of the township phone lines. And so as long as you can promise us that no other service and reliability will change, I think we would be aligned to it, but just give her the ability to move forward if Shawna sees fit then.
I think I would like this to be done by resolution, Mr. Raymer, simply because this is a fairly significant change, plus the dollars are such that I think we should go ahead and approve it by resolution, and that'll be 2021-14.
Okay, I'll introduce Resolution 2021-14. This resolution will be for approval of the $6,000 quote that includes a server, of which of that, in that $6,000, $2,500, up to $2,500 is included for changing over to SIP trunks for the phone lines.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion of Resolution 2021-14? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-14 is adopted.
That is all the items I have for myself tonight. Mrs. Reed?
Hello. So I, we had a senior center meeting shortly after our January meeting, and so I wanted to touch base with some services and things that they're doing there. They are having senior meals, I believe they're frozen and they're picked up weekly. They are delivering some of them, I believe, on a weekly basis. There are currently 69 seniors signed up for those meals. Obviously, they would prefer to be open and serving them hot meals every day, but with COVID, unfortunately, that is not, that is not feasible. They are looking into, and I think they do this yearly, offering tax service. AARP does it completely free for seniors. I believe it's actually for anybody, I don't think they discriminate, so as long as they're fairly simple taxes, if you will. They were talking about possibly, it would be a drive-up, so you would drive up to the location. It was not finalized at my meeting on the 14th, and I have not heard. There was some discussion about having it at the senior center. So you would drive up there, pick up the packet, and then return all of your stuff at a later date, because they're not allowed to bring people into the senior center. So hopefully, there will be more information out about that, probably in the senior center newsletter, or maybe on the Germantown website. But that is a really good service, or the people were discussing it, and so they had a really good turnout in previous years, so. They are still doing that. The OTA conference, it was very nice that it was virtual, so I think that was useful for many of us. They did have a session that discussed the JED, and so that was very interesting and obviously related to us currently very well. So that was nice, and the slides that you can refer back to, I thought were very helpful as well. The JED meeting, this is more of a question, I guess, for the fellow trustees. So at our last JED meeting, there was some discussion about only one representative coming. Are we all attending that JED meeting, or is it just one of us? I am comfortable with either one, but the way it's published, it is all of us.
Yeah, I thought we were good with one, with Tyler.
Yeah. And I think, I sent Mr. Heaton a note on it, and if I recall, Mr. Heaton, you said, even if it was just one of us that would attend, we could open the meeting, and then noted only one of us was attending, and it wouldn't be a Germantown official meeting, correct?
That is correct. We'll call it an official meeting. We've done the special meeting notice, we sent out everything to all the people in the methods I described earlier. I'll do a roll call, Mr. Raymer. I'll get one here, and I'll get two silence, and I will simply announce that this cannot be considered an official trustee meeting. Nevertheless, the meeting goes forward, and with WebEx, all the residents can still watch the meeting and listen to everything that's discussed. But there will be no minutes taken if only Mr. Raymer comes.
And I think, Mr. Heaton, you had mentioned that's probably a good path forward on future meetings as well, just because then it keeps the public in the know of us doing it, it doesn't do it like it's behind closed doors. But again, only one of us would have to attend in that case. I'm fine however you guys want to do it. I know it's difficult to get all the schedules together. The other thing I'll say is, hopefully, we're at a point now where you get the contract, and you guys can give some feedback online, on the email to Brenda if you guys have anything. Otherwise, I can bring it back to the next meeting, and we can continue to discuss it.
Okay.
I'm fine however you guys want to proceed there.
I'm fine with just you, if that's fine. No minutes that you'll have to take. It's still going to be, like you said, it's still going to be on WebEx. I see him nodding, I appreciate it, not taking more minutes. So, and there's really no, there's no pressing need, and the other places are only sending one representative. I think it makes it easier, especially when we're down to just basic percentages that we're not going to have much control over, so. Like I said, I'm fine with just you, if you're comfortable with that.
Okay. I just wanted to not be the only one that didn't show up, so I just wanted to make sure I was correct. I did receive the draft for the JED, and so I apologize, I received it on Friday, I didn't realize I received it, so I forwarded it to the two of you, well, I just didn't realize you guys did not receive it. And I also sent it to Mr. Heaton, so hopefully, you have that, so you can look it over and see if you have questions for Mr. Raymer. The only other thing was related to thank the chief for taking care of the materials for the CERT people. I see all the good work that they're doing. One of the CERT members did reach out to me. They would like to, they have a framed, I believe it's mahogany, piece made out of the Dayton Daily News articles that have been published about them recently, about COVID. They would like to hang them somewhere, I'm pretty sure in the township hall around their other CERT stuff that is already here, and they wanted to know if they were allowed to do that, if they were not, what needs to be done, and I told them I would.
That'd be a question for Jeremy. I mean, he'll be the one to do it.
Okay, I just didn't know if there were certain things that were on the lawn, not, you know, you don't want like, he did send me a photograph of it, it looked very nice in the photograph, it was pretty small on my phone, so, but it's homemade.
Not too much wall space left.
I know, that's why I said, okay.
He has arrangements?
I do not, it's the...
It's not a big deal. They can find a place. I think Jeremy will be the person to talk to.
Okay, I didn't want to just say, sure, hang it up, without bringing up a question.
If you can hear me, your audio cut out. If you can hear us, we have lost audio in the meeting room. They're reconnecting, and we will be back with you shortly. Please be patient. Thank you.
Are we back?
Okay, I apologize, I'm not sure where you guys stopped being able to hear me, so I will just, I guess, restart from that. The member of the CERT team has, I apologize, has reached out to me about hanging something in the trustee hall. There was a size on it, it is done in mahogany, it's 18 by 24. It is from the Franklin Chronicle, it appears, it does have a picture. It looks well done from the picture, and he just wanted to know if he could hang it near the stuff in the, rest of the CERT stuff in the township office, so. It seemed that that was fine with the other trustees, so I will let him know. I know they are working really hard day and night, I see pictures often out in the cold and snow and rain, and this week's going to be rough with all the different temperatures and weather, snow we're going to have, so I appreciate them representing the township so well and going above and beyond for us. That was, I believe that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Stubbs?
All right, thank you. Pool, we met, we're going to meet again here this month. Still waiting to decide on rates for this season with COVID last year and the amount of money we've lost, as well as the potential minimum wage increase, we're waiting to see what we can do. The city had mentioned something about shutting down the concession stand for the season, so I'm not sure where that's going to go, we're still discussing that as well. There are two openings on the pool board. If anyone in Germantown or Germantownship is interested, please let me or the city know so we can get you, get some people, get a full board. Cemetery meeting tonight before this one, they had to replace a few bushings on the front loader of the backhoe. It had gotten worn and sloppy, it's, they've used it for 18 years down there, so a little bit of an expense, but it, safety, when they're around the hedge zones all the time, they can't have something shifting and giving when it's unnecessary. They're looking at getting, we are looking at getting three new weed eaters for this season, approximately $350 each. As you can imagine, weed eaters are run constantly in the summer down there, the ones we have are well over a decade old, so it's time to update and replace. Question for Abra, do you know if there's still a vacancy on the senior center?
You know, I was actually just looking at that, because there are some questions about the bylaw, I guess, or how that's going to happen, that was brought up several meetings ago, so as of right now, I believe that there is an opening, nothing has been changed or brought up. We just want to make sure, there was some question about if they had to be a member of the GASC or not a member of the GASC, even if they had to be a member of Germantown or Germantownship, if that is written in there. And so if we were looking at what exactly, what can we do? So I believe so, but they're still looking into it.
Okay, Dr. Cross reached out and has expressed interest in joining. He's planning on volunteering once it opens back up.
Hopefully, that's soon, hopefully.
If there is an opening, I would ask that we put Dr. Cross on there, but find out the specifics first.
Yes.
I know he's interested and is willing to volunteer, or wanting to volunteer, not willing, wants to volunteer at the senior center. Lastly, the OTA, seven in eight years, this one's not my favorite, because it's online and not in person, but I haven't made it through all of the classes yet, I'm watching the evenings, but they are definitely, I'm getting a lot of repeats at this point, it's seven times in eight years, but it's always definitely good information and good to see what other townships are doing across the state of Ohio. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. I just wanted to know, one more thing I'd forgotten to mention, we talked about the incremental calls that we approved for the email. I did want to mention, we had found when we were looking into the Spectrum stuff a while back, some charges on Spectrum that were, in addition to the phone lines, some TV charges and stuff, there were more. I think that's going to offset, you know, probably another 75 to 90% of these calls too, so I just want the township folks to know that as well, so we should have some savings coming from that. Shawna's working on calling the Spectrum and canceling one of those subscriptions, so hopefully, we can net-net be pretty much flush on this email ad, so hopefully, it doesn't feel like just an ad to anyone. I don't have anything else tonight, is there any other new business?
And unmuted, Haley?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, everybody. First off, I want to thank all the trustees for everything y'all have been doing, and everybody else too, chief, the road department, everybody. Jeremy, y'all doing a great job, and the township people appreciate more of what y'all do than what they will ever tell you. You drive back and forth across these roads, and you don't have snowbanks to deal with, they don't ever tell you that, but I will. So going back to the CERT team, thank you, chief, for the equipment you have provided us. Our teams have been out with COVID since last March. We were out with the testing sites. Harold was out there every day with the testing sites, December. We started with the vaccine sites, rain, snow, winds, whatever, we were in downtown Dayton, six to eight of us directing traffic. We now have other teams coming in to help us with that, because it was getting unsustainable for the Germantown CERT. But I would like to thank y'all for the support of us, because we are trying to represent And the, one of the lieutenants with the Dayton Police Department walked up to Harold and I one day and said, who are y'all and where can I get ahold of you again? They were so impressed with what we did. So that's a testament to what Germantownship can do, and now Lori's involved with us again, she's inside with the different things happening. We're trying our best to make sure the COVID sites work, and we are there as volunteers. Y'all know, we're all volunteers, but I thank you for the support you have given us. It's pretty hard on a lot of us. Right now, I am in northern Ohio, getting snowed in like crazy, it's supposed to be seven degrees tonight, so it's good to see that your trustees are there supporting you, and I thank you all. Just thank you very much.
Mr. Cleveland, would you please, just for the record, give me your name and your address?
Oh, absolutely. I am sorry, I forgot to do that. My name is Lynn Cleveland, 118-58 Oxford Road. I am the second-in-command of the Germantown Police Department CERT Division.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland.
I apologize for that.
Thank you for the kind words, I appreciate it, and I know Jeremy's not on here, but we'll pass that along to Jeremy about the roads, and appreciate those kind words.
I've been trying to help y'all get along, you know, it's 2021, and I've been hitting y'all with the email thing for a couple of years now, and I'm glad to see y'all are finally doing something with your servers and your, I gave you my oldest daughter, okay?
We'll see what we can do, we'll try to get there.
Thank you all.
Mr. Raymer? Mr. Raymer, Dr. Cross has put in the chat that he would like to make a comment about the zoning report.
Is that okay, Tyler? Okay. So, Mark Cross, 7444 South Stiver Road, just to get back to the zoning report, there's been a lot of discussion in the last few months of the zoning commission as far as complaints in the township being more complaint-driven versus, you know, going out and looking for problems, so that is hopefully being addressed. Also, there are certain things that are really only trustee matters, junk vehicles, unsafe buildings, and actually vegetation. And one thing that the zoning commission is looking at is to incorporate some of those ORC articles in our zoning commission, so we'll hopefully approach those a little bit and give you, the trustees, a little bit more guidance in how to approach those issues, so. So that's all coming up, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know you guys have been working on that, so we'll look for that to come across us at some point, but I think Haley's done a good job outlining this, and hopefully, everyone's in alignment. You'll be able to read this if you're interested in Mr. Cross.
Okay, good.
I think it's a very reasonable approach on how to address notices.
Good, thank you.
I will point out, if you all haven't had a chance to watch the very last of the OTA conference seminars, it was specifically on this issue of junk cars, weeds, trash, and what trustees can do in the township legally to address those, so it'd be worthwhile listening. listening to that also.
Okay. If there's no other new business, I'll make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
One second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I doubt anyone's opposed. We are adjourned at 8:11. Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.